Head groundskeeper appointment for Parks. Make a motion to approve the appoint Jeff Lester to the position of head groundskeeper in the Parks Department at the rate of nineteen dollars and seven cents per hour. Do you have a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any questions?
So this is just bringing Jeff to be head groundskeeper?
Yes, yes. As we discussed before. All in favor?
Aye.
And as a second motion, I'd like to authorize the Highway Department to go out to advertise for applications for labor full-time. Parks Department, I'm sorry. What did I say?
You've hired a volunteer. Parks Department.
To go out and advertise for labor, full-time position at the rate of thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents per hour.
I was gonna say, I need to correct that. His memo does say sixty-five, but it needs to be sixty-six. It rounds off.
Thank you. I meant my motion would be thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents per hour, which is the job that is being vacated by Mr. Lester. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor? Aye. So, the Environmental Commission, a secretarial appointment. I would like to appoint Cheryl Melisha from the sewer treatment plant to be the secretary for the Environmental Commission. At her current rate, she will get two hours of overtime per meeting and two hours of overtime once a month at one, at one, one point five over hourly rates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Justice Court Assistance Program grant application, that's what we talked about earlier, that's what we had the special work session this morning, and that's been taken care of and Bernie touched base on that. So, we need to set Halloween hours. So Halloween hours would be for October 31st, and I believe, do we have four to eight? Do we have four to eight?
I thought presidents would prefer four to seven.
Yeah, kids would prefer four to eight. Kids would prefer four to midnight.
We've had complaints in the past when we put four to eight.
Yeah, so, okay. So, I would like a motion to set the Halloween hours, October 31st, for four to seven o'clock, seven PM? So, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So now moving to the privilege of the floor, Rosemary Warren.
A couple things sort of interesting here. I was gonna talk about the unpaid sewer and water accounts, even from last year, and you're talking about it tonight. Now, it goes like water, ninety-four thousand. Okay, ninety-four thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, an unpaid water bill. Now it's gone up to a hundred and twenty thousand. Now I know you turn it over to the county, but what if those people aren't paying their taxes anyway? Say they've moved, it's a zombie home, they don't care. So I'm wondering how much you collect, I really should find out. How much did you collect from the county on that? About, okay, master sewer, you went from eighty thousand to eighty-one thousand, salt sewer, that would be San Borning, that's nine thousand, town charge, you don't answer anything here, but I didn't know what that meant, I made freedom of information, and you went down a little bit. So altogether, it was two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand in 2017, now it's two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So, it's sort of interesting, on that much, in a town our size, unpaid water and sewer bills. Now, if someone has a major illness, loses their job, I'm not anti that. I mean, we let that slide a little bit, it's an emergency. So, but as I said, I think we ought to look into that a little bit more. The other thing though, I was paid for the vest for the policeman, you know, and I was at the Red Brick Schoolhouse, and I visited there, and there's a lot of artwork there. My sister taught there. She taught there years ago. And so I walked the wooden floors, and I thought, gee, I'm walking where my sister walked, isn't that something? But the artwork, it's kind of in a dark, it's beautiful artwork. In fact, it should not be in that building unseen by the public. I don't know if any of you have walked into that, but along the wall, there they are, some are kind of 3D type. So I'm thinking they should be either rotated to a library, rotated to area funeral homes. I really think that we're missing out, leaving them in the Red Brick Schoolhouse for maybe four people to see, and the lights are so dark, I can already find my way. But as I said, my sister taught there, stayed in Lewiston until her husband was drafted in World War II, and then she moved back home again. Glad you're doing something with us Cold War veterans, do something with all these veterans. These fellows are dying off. They're dying off. My husband was a veteran of World War II. There are not too many of them left, so any exemption you can give them and their family, please do so.
Mrs. Warren, here.
What's that?
That's the list you were looking for.
I'm a little leery to come up here without the attorney. Is this all right for me to take this from them? I don't have to vote for them or anything.
Yes, you do.
I don't have to vote for them or anything. You never know what these people run to.
Mrs. Warren, I got your back, don't worry.
Oh, good, yeah. You know, someone said, "Mrs. Warren, do you have Paul in San Borning?" I said, "Hey, we're the only street in San Borning that got paid like today."
No, I think it's thanks to you.
I got Paul.
I think it's thanks to you.
I got Paul.
Thank you, Mrs. Warren.
You're welcome.
Paul at Glasgow.
Audit report, when Donna comes back on Wednesday, will probably be on the website.
Marty's saying yes.
The other three, there's three other things here. I think you'd better have everybody together in this room and do a mic class. Because, and I don't mean mic back in the room, I mean M-I-C. Because I'm sure you don't like us shouting out, "Please use the mic." Okay? Either that, or get wireless mics instead of these mics that you have here. But you need to start to do a protocol. The whole reason of a meeting is for us to come and observe and to hear what you have to say. You can't hear what you have to say when you don't talk into the mic, especially when the mic is standing up like that, into the, into the ceiling.
Just so you know, we're, we're looking at buying more mics.
Well, you're buying more mics like what you got. I suggest you get the wireless mics.
Yeah, well, we're looking into it.
The other thing too is, it was interesting comments that you said, Mr. Ramek, at the beginning, about this being disrespectful. I would hope that disrespectfulness also applies towards elected officials and appointed officials towards the public. Okay?
Okay.
Two ways, two ways.
Okay.
Two, two ways. It would be nice if elected officials and appointed officials are nice guys. Now, the other, the last thing I want to talk about is that Lewiston zoning establishes a procedure that must be followed before any development for this conceptual plan to be approved. One of the items that must be satisfied is that the developer must show financial evidence, which Mr. Bax has talked about, but also that the developer must provide evidence that he has successfully completed a development of this, of a magnitude that he has undertaken. At the last meeting, Mr. Morell asked Mr. Ravino, had he ever done a development of an Upper Mountain of this magnitude, over a hundred units? And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Mr. Ravino said no. And we did some research, and I think maybe Mr. Ravino supplied the information, or maybe Mr. Morell did, that what Mr. Ravino did in Clarence was probably developments of maybe ten or twelve or whatever, but they were of a smaller variety and not of a hundred plus. So, one could only deduce that he has not met this particular criteria of section 360-123 2B 17 of our zoning law. So I would think that since he hasn't done this, any consideration of approving this plan should be, now on the table, should be refused. Further, we have spoken of a potential traffic problem in Bronson. I have raised the issue of the potential development, the potential of additional traffic problem on the Limpie property across the street on Bronson Drive. One of your responsibilities is to ensure that the health, safety, and general welfare of citizens, including the citizens that live on Bronson Drive, who travel Bronson Drive, such as myself, I live on the Circle, that's the only outlet that I take to get onto Upper Mountain Road and to go into civilization. I would think that the fact that you're gonna have some potential problems, there are hundreds of thousands of vehicles, I shouldn't say hundreds of thousands, thousands of vehicles going down that road. School buses, ambulances, fire trucks, maybe? You've got a safety problem and a general welfare problem for the residents that live there and the residents that don't live on Bronson, who are traveling down the road. So I would hope that you take that into consideration and that this, this whole, this whole thing, being that you have so many issues that are pending, that have not been fully addressed, that you take this, this development and you send it back to the planning board, and you have conditions, very strong conditions, put on. I'm not done yet, don't clap. I guess that's all, I, I just wanted to say that I know it's a difficult decision that you have to make, but you have a responsibility to those people that you serve. And whether you have a path going from the church for the Bronsons, that doesn't address it. You have people going down an unlit road. I'm gonna go home and stark out, I'm gonna go down Bronson Drive, and Mr. and Mrs. D'Amio is gonna say the same thing that I'm gonna say. There're gonna be people with baby carriages, on skateboards, going down this road. And people don't go thirty miles an hour, trust me. They don't go thirty miles an hour.
Thank you. Thank you. Don Anderson.
Hello, my name's Don Anderson. My wife, Jane, and I live at 884th Circle. Thank you, guys, for serving on the board, and everybody's here to do a good job. And I might be a little passionate tonight, so no reflection, I think you guys do a great job. So, anyway, we are adamantly opposed to the Upper Mountain concept as it currently stands. There are many issues with the PUD that could and would seriously cause harm to our community. We have heard that we need to move forward on the PUD to get some of our answers and questions answered. And yes, there are many serious issues that need to be addressed in the next phase, but there was plenty of things that we already know and plenty of things that need to be handled before the concept plan moves forward. The strategy of fast-tracking this PUD to get answers seems like something a big city would do. And last time I was in here, there was a seal behind you that said the town of Lewiston. It does not say the city of Lewiston. We don't do things here that way, it seems. We need to get, you know, things done right the first time. So at this time, I'd like the board to focus on things that we do already know, instead of talking about those questions that need to be answered later. And this is what we already know. We know that the community is overwhelmingly opposed to the project. We know that the units that are being proposed to be built are drastically, drastically out of character of what is already up there. We also know that the small amount of units that are similar to what is being proposed to be built, there is a large disproportionate amount of those units that are on the market right now. And those units that are on the market right now, some of those units have been on the market for up to two years. They've been devalued two, three, or four times, discounted, and they still can't sell. Okay? There's also a lot of other residents in Saddlewood that tell us that they would like to sell their properties, like to sell their units, but the market is already flooded. So they're afraid to put those units on the market. So if we put our heads together and we look at the evidence, the evidence says that there is no market for those high-density townhomes. And we're talking a hundred and ten of them? Our town could get stuck with them, a hundred of, whatever. It's a, it's a higher amount. I would hate to hear.
Hold on, Mr. Crick. It's not a hundred and ten townhomes.
Okay.
I believe it's a hundred and seven patio homes, and then a, what is the town, the townhouse, they're gonna have one more townhouse building there.
Six, two.
So, okay.
I would assume that it's more high-density. I don't know the exact details of it. But, you know, we hear, we heard from the builder about, you know, a phantom list of potential buyers. And then we heard from a real estate agent about, who has money vested in this project, will make a lot of money on this project. And we heard about these mythical people called snowbirds, but if you look at the evidence, it doesn't exist. That market's not there. But just talking about that stuff by itself would be enough for a town board to send us back to the planning board and say, you know, "Let's rework this." But that's, that is not really our, even our main issue. So, what our, what our main issue is, is, is safety. If you look at Bronson Drive, there's no sidewalks on Bronson Drive. This is about the average space there is for someone to walk down Bronson Drive. There is no shoulder. There is no lights. Like, we said before, people go faster than thirty, they have a problem speeding because it's, it's one long straight street. And I, and I'm glad you guys did acknowledge the danger to the children going to the park and thinking about putting another path in. But does that mean that kids are more valuable than adults? Because this is really the only egress in and out of all of that, that neighborhood. There's three, you know, a couple hundred homes up there, and if you need to walk to the bus stop, is a, is a forty-five-year-old man less important than a ten-year-old child? We gotta address all of this. It's not gonna stop the skateboarders, it's not gonna stop the bikers putting this path in to this park, it's not gonna stop all the other pedestrian traffic that goes down that street. So, you know, I'm really concerned about the safety of people. And if you push through a PDU like this without addressing those, that safety issue, we could end up with headlines, you know, it could be, it could be bad. And I know, Mr. Ramek, you know, you, in the law enforcement, I'm sure, sure you've seen a lot of, you know, bad stuff like that, so. We just don't want that to happen. And another thing is, is that I've, I've heard a lot of my neighbors talking, and they're putting together, you know, like a legal war chest. If they have to take care of their safety themselves, they will. And I don't, I don't see why, we just, things can work better if the residents in the town work together. You know, probably a lot faster as well. So, I would really like you guys to consider to, you know, at the next meeting, to deny the PUD as it stands. Send it back to the planning board, let's work together, let's make it safe, let's put something in there that enhances our neighborhood.
I got a question for you. In your email you sent me, you said you moved across the country. Just out of curiosity, where'd you move from?
Las Vegas.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I've seen a lot of good and bad.
Burned sprawl.
A lot of good and bad of both ends.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the service, thank you. Marcia Vizzelli, Marcia?
I have a letter that I authored to read for my neighbor, Elizabeth Doherty M.D. She owns two residents at Saddlewood, one at Hackney Lane and one on Bridle Path Lane. So I'm gonna read her letter, these are her words. I have spoken before in front of the board and the planning board regarding the Ravino's proposed development. I am frustrated by what I perceive as, as both boards lack of support of real true interest in the area of residents concerned. Today I want to remind you that we elected you to represent us and speak for us. The Ravinos only represent themselves and the money they hope to make from this project. As our elective representatives, you are obligated to vote against the Ravino's proposed plan because the majority of your constituents are against it. Many of us are under the impression that you've always been in favor of this development, and these meetings and hearings are perfunctory. So this begs the question, why would you vote against the will of your people? What could possibly motivate you to vote against us? Think about it, people. Thank you, Elizabeth Doherty.
Can you, can you give Marty the, the letter?
I have a couple copies.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty. Joe D'Amico.
First of all, I'd like to say that that last meeting, I couldn't attend, I was stuck in airport in Colorado, I apologize, so some of the things that I say may be redundant, but I'd like to also thank Mr. Morell, Mr. Bax for actually coming out to the scene or the area that's proposed to be developed. I like to believe that when you're actually there, and you're standing, and you see where some of these boundaries will exist, and I think it'll, it helps make you guys realize what an impact is, is, you know, proposed to take place. But, that being said, I'd like to address the traffic study, which was recommended by our planning board. This study, and if that's what you call it, was paid for by the proposed developer. It also appears as though they received exactly what they wanted. A report that informs our planning board, you, the town board members, and we, the residents, of absolutely nothing. It seems a gesture offered to simply shut us up. Because people who live on Bronson, James Elliott, the Circle, the escarpment, and in the Saddlewood development are primarily concerned with the increase in traffic volume for safety concern on our streets where we live, not the developer. A brand-new road is being proposed, yet the study didn't include Bronson at all. In fact, the final report never even mentions Bronson. The name Bronson doesn't even appear. At this point, some of you, I hope, are asking yourselves, why would they pay for a study on a road that isn't involved, that being Upper Mountain, which was mentioned primarily in the study? Are they trying to hide something? Or possibly not draw attention to a more important issue? I'm certain that even in the developer's mind, they know the surrounding area will be greatly impacted. It's ludicrous to think otherwise. Honestly, I'm puzzled that no concern or curiosity is shown to this potential road and a new intersection. Some of you have mentioned a deep concern of a lawsuit being filed for not allowing development to take place, yet not so much as even a whisper of thought for a public safety issue concerning, you know, the, the study. A proper study should have centered around Bronson, James, Bridle Path. A reputable study would have no doubt made reference to new traffic signals, such as a stop sign, or perhaps two of them, maybe even a stop light with the volume of traffic that's, that's projected. Additionally, it may have even recommended an adjustment to an already existing area speed limit. I mean, we're talking about a legitimate study here. And take a moment to think about this, please. Not a single shovel of dirt has been removed, nor one nail pounded in, yet the developer has shown very little willingness to properly meet Lewiston's demands, which would be the, the traffic study. Is this a sign of things to come when dealing with these out-of-towners? I mean, what's gonna happen if, in the middle of the project, we get a rainstorm and we detect a, maybe a drainage issue? You know what I mean? Is this, you know, is, is, is this a sign of things to come? The study given to us was a joke. Think of this first important request that we asked of them as a test, and they failed. It's beginning to become apparent why attention is not focusing on the new road, which is now clearly very important to this project. You see, if we reference the 1982 plans currently in place, and according to what we've been told, they can start that tomorrow, because that's already been okay. That's what, that's what we were, that's what we've been constantly told, that that's, they can continue that, that's been okay. You see, if we reference the 1982 plans currently in place, they show that the sixty-six-foot-wide stretch of land, no, it's, it's shown as a stone base only to be used as a service road or access point for emergency vehicles, and there's a good reason why. You see, our town ordinance requires a thirty-foot minimum setback on all the new developments. Per law, one cannot build thirty feet or closer to the road. So, so why then would it be perfectly fine for the same developer to build a road that violates the same setback or ordinance or our law? A new road built to be used for daily traffic off of Bronson will not fit. That's why the 1982 plans indicate a stone-based road only. Whoever drew up that plan back in the early days realized this, but apparently, a second access point was necessary for emergency equipment. That I understand. I spent twenty-six years working in the public safety field myself. Simply put, there isn't enough space between the two existing homes, one of them being mine. Mr. Bax, you stood there, and you asked, "Where would, would the road be?" And through a rough guesstimation, I came to a point where, now, they had mentioned something to the effects, and, and the Ravinos aren't here, and their, and their high-paid yes-man, Mr. Metzger, isn't here to answer the question, and I really hoped he would be. But, there was some topic brought up about maybe a screen or a barrier, and even with a service road, I, I would really prefer a fence. And, and I've spoken to my neighbor on the other side of the, the potential roadway, Mr. Grano, he feels the same way. He's got grandchildren. As of right now, my wife and I do not. It's now apparent that the road off of Upper Mountain is the only option for this project. So I, I would urge you guys to seriously consider that, and I also have one other thing that a, that a neighbor did ask me to read and show you guys, and just, I just.
Go ahead.
Where did the notion come from that the town can be sued?
I'm sorry, is this just written in the letter?
No, it's not, no, this isn't in the letter. That, that right there would be, if you, if you, this is, these are the types of homes that are needed.
I'm sorry, go, go ahead, if, if it addresses it in the letter, go ahead.
Well, it doesn't. To be honest with you, this, this was handed me, handed to me by another neighbor and asked me to read it. In fact, it references the financial feasibility, but that was already covered. They wanted to ask, "Where did the notion come from that our town could be sued when all along the town has the option of, if this plan is not approved, to revert back to the original zoning? Why is the town not utilizing that right? If you pass this concept plan, we are stuck with it." And this is the type of homes that are needed. On that, on that postcard, that's what, that's what I was asked to present to you guys. I apologize for the little bit of mix-up.
Oh, it's okay.
And I think I, I don't know if I need to bring that postcard back.
You can have, yeah, you can have it back.
But, I mean, that's, that's pretty much all I have to say. I was actually hoping that, that Metzger would be here so that he can address these questions. I mean, I'd like to see what his answers are. And I would also appreciate if you guys looked into that issue with regards to the, the minimum setback.
You can always talk to our building inspector, Tim Masters, when he's out, you know, he's here, he's out tonight.
No, during the day, he keeps regular hours here.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I can stop in.
I call, I call first, make an appointment.
Okay.
Because he's in and out all day, doing inspections and stuff like that. So, yeah, he'll, he'll go over.
Actually, is his phone number on the website?
Well, just call the town hall, and I think if you hit zero, you'll get, I believe, Carol or Donna, and they'll send it right down to him. But I think it is on the website, extension.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. D'Amico.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody that's, that's the last, that signed up. I'd like to thank everybody for attending the meeting.
Can I read this letter from John Jacoby? He has to be right into the record.
Okay.
This is from John Jacoby, regarding the Ravino Brothers project here, Bronson, James, Upper Mountain, and the Circle. Anecdotal evidence would suggest that in order to install sewer lines, water lines, and some foundation, construction blasting is very likely to be necessary. As a battalion chief, the Norfolk Falls Fire Department, I attended several annual dam failure meetings hosted by the power authority. These meetings are designed to keep area first responders current as to emergency preparedness or a break in the wall of the reservoir. It dawned on me recently that blasting within one mile of the reservoir may have the potential to cause anything from a small leak to a catastrophic failure. One might correctly point out that much blasting has been done in that general vicinity over the years, an offer that is proof that it will be needed, that it will indeed be safe. However, the real possibility of... However, the real possibility exists that the effects of successful, successive, I'm sorry, successive construction blasting, cumulative, and that each one hasn't contributed to any fault in features that has yet have not been detected. Possibility exists that seeing in the reservoir wall breasts on or near the same bedrock being blasted, it might precipitate a breach in the reservoir wall. Acknowledging the potential for catastrophe, it would seem prudent that the Army Corps of Engineers be consulted with two questions in mind. One, is it safe to blast this close to the reservoir? Two, are the existing power authority dam failure plans adequate to address this scenario? I would hope that the board considers this and takes appropriate action.
Thank you. Okay, upcoming meetings, the planning board meeting is October 19th at 6:30 PM, and the public hearing, regular town board meeting is October 23rd at 6:00 PM. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and for everybody speaking, whether they are for or against either of the, the projects. Um, that's safe Halloween, everybody. I'm sorry, motion to move it to executive session.
Yeah.
There'll be no action taken, so, I'm sorry.
Is Mr. Ravino gonna be at the next meeting that you have on October?
You know, I, I can, we can put it on the agenda next, I don't know if he will be or not. I can't speak for him.
So we get a letter if he's gonna be on?
No, we can put it on our website. I'll put it on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda on the website, okay? So motion to move it to executive session, executive, all in favor? Aye.